Over here, so.
They were fine. You'll know when she's here. Hey, I'll call our meeting in order six o'clock. On minutes, did anyone catch anything in the minutes they wanted to? Sorry. Those in favor? Excellent. Uh consent agenda, you have some additions or modifications. Like add either G. Ruble seismic owner architect agreement. Uh bills, anything the bills jump out at anyone?
One thing uh I was noticing there, we had to buy some stuff to fix uh like. From books, readers um. Is there anything in our lease? Cause we don't own those, right?
You own some, yeah, so it's a mixed. It's a mixed bag. We have some that are ours and some of your means. I'm not sure.
The least ones do we is the agreement there that we have.
Probably repair them. Not. Yeah, I don't think we get to send them back if they're broke.
Yeah, I and they it wasn't. A massive amount. It just got me thinking like I wonder.
I can ask him. I think this is just normal wear and tear stuff.
Uh I did like the um. The kilowatts put on the power.
Yeah.
Because really our usage is down. It's just that the price electricity is. Thank you for taking that extra step.
Yeah, I think that's nice because then it kind of justifies some of these projects and lighting upgrades and this and that that we've done. Like that.
Yeah, I like it a lot.
Uh approval to hire uh Jasmine Knighton assist educational assistant and special education. Uh Sharon Wong, educational assistant and early literacy. Jenna John, Monroe High School. National Honor Society co-advisor, Amy Thornburg, Monroe High School National Honors. Society co-adviser. Together. Marie Louise Martinson, Smile Club co-advisor and Olivia Ferrario, Smile Club co-advisor. They're all. People that have been staffed for. Except for Jasmine, she's a daughter, it sounds like. Wonderful. Then we have some volunteer coaches, um Logan Rutherford, middle school girls basketball and Natalie Payne. Middle school girls basketball live coached together before, I believe.
Last year.
Awesome. Um approval of cooperative sponsorship. See baseball with L C. And um softball with L C, so that would be good if we that puts us over the edge. For softball, you think both.
I think we're gonna be able to do it, you know.
They're coming this direction then?
Yeah, it sounds like only one, possibly three, but mostly this one. That's a sister of one of the boys that's been on the baseball.
How many baseball players?
So how many years have you been? This is second year?
And um approval of seismic ownership agriculture or. Architectural agreement, gee. Um before we do that, you just want to clarify real quick, anything?
This is the contract amount. We'll get down to the the grant amount of two point five.
Okay.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds good. Looks like uh the base is. Two point five and then there's a few little bits, but it could also be included in, so we'll. Get some clarification. Okay, I guess with that.
So um I will motion to approve your consent agenda. With the caveat that the seismic agreement will not exceed two point five.
My second.
Those in favor? Wonderful. Uh communications, I have an A. Does that stand for anything in particular? Just an A. Uh delegations and presentations, uh literacy program update from Cam Kyle.
Little handout for you guys.
Awesome.
So I think the hope of this, we just could give you guys kind of a snapshot of. What our K five literacy program um. Looks like at the grade school, kind of like a. Data update, current state where we are and. Well, thank you. Um. And then kind of what we're working on um and our goals for the year. So um. The data you're looking at on the front page is our benchmark data. Um the top table is our spring data, end of year, and the bottom table is our fall data. And so what this data comes from is Acadian, so it was formerly formerly known as Dibbles. And so this is what we've used for years to assess. All of our students K five and their progress for reading. And so I think this is a good comparison um. If you guys have looked at state testing scores, like another assessment measure that really thrives our instruction in our work. And what those these scores look like in relation to some of the state state testing scores. Um our students um in our state testing grades three, four and five all did better on Acadian's um. Then state testing. And so I think it's just important to look at all of the data we're collecting and kind of really get a sense of where we're at. Um, do you guys have any questions about that?
So if I'm looking at this um. The kindergarten in the spring will be what we're looking at first grade for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. Um and benchmark happens um three times a year. Jenna really coordinates all of that um. Via Title One, we do it in the fall, winter and spring. Um there's different measures depending on the grade level. Um once you hit about middle or second grade, it ends up being oral reading fluency. So how? Um at what rate can students read? How accurate are they reading? And then can they tell you something about it? And then another comprehension measure. Um and then as I keep going, um we're gonna see how we use that data. So looking at those scores, I mean, you want all of our kids, we do benchmark um not. I've never seen anywhere that has a hundred percent of their kids needing, but we certainly have room to improve. With these scores, there's definitely some really um solid spots. Like, I mean, spring. Third grade last year, seventy percent is a really solid end of year score, and there's definitely growth when you look at year to year. Um and when you ease down into individual students, there's all this really impressive growth happening with students. Uh but there's always a lot of room to grow. So I think that's where our K five team. Uh was at right now is. Uh we have people who have now been there for a year or two or more and. We're pretty cohesive and I feel like we've got some really good momentum. Um so the next two pages, I won't read through every word for you. You can look at it, ask questions if you'd like. Um so I kind of look at. Our literacy program is like we have instruction and then we have our systems that support our instruction. So. The instruction that all of our kids get K five every day is everybody gets ninety minutes of oral reading at a minimum. It's protected time. Students aren't being polled. That instruction is focused on grade level standards. And teachers differentiate within that. So they're all kind of aiming for the same target, but some kids might need like a few supports to get up to that target. Some kids have it and need some extension. Um we also have thirty minutes of targeted support every day um. For students, which is our reading academy times. So that's for Jenna. Um and her title team pulls students to work on lagging skills to help them get. Caught up to grade level um. Our instructional focus in our K five realm, K two is really focused on foundational skills, so. Being able to automatically sound out words, things like that. And then three five goes into like fluent and accurate reading. And like every grade level, like the common K five target is that they. And understand what they're reading and then go do something with what they're reading, like talk about it or write about it or tell you what they think about it. Um everyone has that kind of common thread. Uh. And then our systems of how we kind of look at that more instruction and then our intervention um. This year, we're doing persistent P L Cs, professional reading communities. They stay. They can look a lot of different ways, but what K five is doing is we're really. Looking at our core reading instruction in teams. To say, are kids getting what I'm teaching them? We're assessing it in a variety of ways. Um just quick little checks to make sure that like. If I have this target, I check to see if they had it. And if they don't have it, how am I adjusting to make sure that they do get it? And um. That conversation has been great so far. Um we get um. Are really trying to hold it on what the priorities for each grade level are and make sure that's aligned across the board. And then um. Jenna's really the leader of how we examine our intervention system. Title One does that. Um so when we pull those kids into intervention in a Title One Reading Academy, Jenna and her team are progress monitoring to make sure they're. Growth with that skill. And then she meets with teachers about every six weeks to see if growth is happening and then make. Group shifts, like kids need to exit or new kids need to come. In and that's really, we just want to make sure we're closing those gaps. And that's what that looks at. Um we have some kind of cool other supports happening. We're partnering with the E S D and this. They're like a consulting firm, West Ed. Um and we have a literacy coach um who's working with us. Um she was actually in the building last week. She was great. Um Jenna and Jennifer Mickelson and Richard and I and her about to go and observe and. We just saw so much good stuff happening in our classrooms and lots of different opportunities for kids, really interactive. And so I think that work is going to be really supportive and um. We have some opportunities for um we're working on for teachers to observe each others because there's so much they can learn just from like watching. Each other do what they're all doing. Um so we have some good ideas around that. And then um the end of last year, we um. Got creative with some grant funds to purchase. Um it's called Ekri. It's like a. Additional kind of overlay that matches with our core curriculum, but really boosts. Those foundational skills and then Jenna's using that in intervention too. So it's really aligned. So kids are. Trying to make sense of many different things. It's all really connected. Um and then goals, sort of what our hope is with. A five this year is that we come out of this year with a really tight um vertical alignment of. What are we teaching at each grade level to make sure that our fifth graders are ready to like go into middle school with a really strong foundation of letters? Um. To be pretty um Jenna and Jennifer are helping with this a lot. Um I I feel like it's a really good momentum going on and um some some points of encouraging data at the end of the year, but. Um seeing the beginning of the year, you're always kind of like, okay, we have this part to go and, you know. Um state testing is its own, it's its own thing. It's a whole different dynamic than this benchmarking, but it's. You know, you. It's motivating to improve for sure, so.
Thank you. When's the, you said fall, winter and spring. When's the next benchmark?
January. It happens usually. Usually the week we come back, but maybe.
I have this year, we're gonna do it the week after, cause that's our whole week.
Yeah.
In January.
Yeah. Yeah, so this. The September scores are the very first full week of school, so it's really like right after summer. Um and then in May, it's it's right in the middle of of May.
So we'll get a report card sometime in January.
Yeah, we could come back and show you where we are in related. Yeah.
Yeah, we really, we really want to keep tabs on how we're doing with that.
Yeah.
We appreciate you guys' hard work up.
Oh, yeah.
When's the state test?
They test um they have a window. We typically do it in the end of April and fourth day.
No, it's not. And you can opt out, right?
Parents can opt out, yeah. Parents can opt out. Yeah. It's definitely, I mean, this testing is more, it's. Part one on one and part whole group and and state testing is. Um it's all computer based. There's like reading and writing, so that it's definitely like. At yeah, so it's it's like a whole new world for third graders, I would say.
This is a better way of benchmark. Our students.
This data guides our instruction a lot more. Yeah, and I think that what we're looking at every couple of weeks in those P L Cs, that's really. Really guiding what teachers are doing, like. Teaching them these core skills, do they get it, you know?
Uh one of the things in our training that we did with West Ed too, that we talked about state testing is the Harper's, it's done in May. So that can't really inform your instruction when you have a whole new group in September.
Yeah.
So it's almost like a tip, but you're trying at the end of the year to see where they're at, like state test wise, but like. You can't do too much of that once you get to September, cause it's a whole new.
Yeah.
Great look.
Yeah. It's a lot of energy for um. Limits to what we can do.
Let's see, meet the teacher and imagine. You're just here for that, or you wanna?
Here.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, can't really, I mean, can kind of explain everything I do though. So we just did benchmarking last month. That takes us up. Actually, this is the first time I've done it that we've actually finished everybody in a whole week, cause it's. Uh K five, K five, we pull, they pull one on one. Um all the testing is actually like they do it on their own, but there's some stuff they do in class. Um so yeah, it's the first time God done a fall. I don't know how we get that. I'm not that. Um but yeah, no, we. I mean, so teachers, so next week you figure out groups and then it's essentially just figuring out where the kids are at and what they need help with, so. The younger kids were really focusing on like just identifying letters and what sounds do letters make and the older kids are working on multi-syllabic words and how do we read. Yeah, I think we're three weeks in now, so it's regaining the routine and there's. Yeah. Yeah, it's going pretty good. And if you had to estimate, how many of those kiddos are you seeing now? Seeing nine to twelve kids from each class, K five. But this is why I do reading. I can't do quick math in my head. Whatever that averages out to, but I think the lowest group we have is. I pull is six from fifth grade. And then I have three A's to help uh run small groups in my room, so we each have like a one to three ratio.
Yeah.
Hypothetically, it's twenty percent, but because we were able to have both the A's is a lot easier to pull our kids who do it.
Excellent, thank you. Uh construction update slash building inspection committee report.
A new construction. Seismic is the only thing that we have on on tap. Um it's from the boys' bathroom hallway. Uh south and extends out to the. The. First and second floor building in the corner.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, big crack. So we did the, we did the seismic assessment, I think, two or three years ago, because we did several different applications. Um so it'll be interesting to come back to it and, you know, kind of. Reorientate ourselves around what exactly are they gonna be able to do. Chunk, this chunk. Notice that the grade school, you can hear a unit outside. We checked it.
Okay.
And also somebody trimmed up the trees, which was very nice.
Yeah.
The contractor. Don't hit your head when you're walking anymore.
Nice. That's on the path.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is technically city property.
Yeah.
Okay, um let's see, enrollment and attendance. We've got a little dip.
How was attendance been at the two campuses?
You're good, great. Yeah, probably you only have to think about us maybe ten. They're in that seventy-five percent or under. Range, but it's been. We dwindled a little bit while the online or we've been able to. Hold on to quite a few kids and we did give a few. Back at home score, they were not on program, but. Same challenge.
Excellent. Um administrative update. I usually start with the middle school, so Richard.
Uh just uh just a recap, simply convert, just a few things that that we had happen. So the curriculum night. Um just a few things note there, it's a pretty low turnout. Um the feeling was it's a little too close to meet uh meet the teacher. Uh so we're gonna look at maybe some alternatives or maybe just not doing it altogether. Just cause we had some teachers that have like a few people show up. Like so, um I think it was pretty well communicated that we're, it was happening. Um but it's just the proximity, I think, to that person of your, you the teacher, people weren't in, so is interested in going. Um we had our gold standard assembly, um and some, that stuff was posted on our Instagram, Facebook, that went really, really well. Um the, she talked a lot about effort, attitude, perseverance. Uh and students really looked to enjoy. A lot of them hung out afterwards, asked lots of questions. Not too often you get to see a three-time Olympic gold medalist. Um they have to wear the gold medals and I think they're really, it was kind of cool. Got some good pictures of the kids. Uh so that was great. Um upcoming, we have science night on the twenty-third, uh it's next week. Uh we have the ball festival coming up and then conferences will be here before we know it. So we'll start scheduling those. Um athletics, volleyball team is and is is doing a really good job of compete uh competing. They're playing against the bigger schools, they. The Crest Falls, Junction Cities, uh Pleasant Hills, I think they're around five hundred or so. Uh football team is uh undefeated at the moment. Uh doing a really good job. Uh and then girls' basketball practice is right around the corner, starting on the twenty-fourth, game start the first of November. Um. And then K five came, went into detail on the early literacy um with the middle school, uh there's. They're a little behind, so. We're we're gonna do the middle school for their P L C work as a kind of identifying those essential standards, but which can hit on a little bit, so. Uh they're gonna identify those things. We're gonna do some work similar to what they're doing, we're doing for their literacy. Uh and then also focusing on engagement, uh strategies and things to keep kids more uh. Yeah, in tune in each class, so that's what we got going on.
Is there a certain area that you're seeing that behind, or is it just kind of across the board?
When I say behind, I mean we're behind them. The K five, they already have those essential standards already identified. They already have their other things and they just haven't gone through that process yet. And there's only. What uh Rosie's the only one that has done it before, the other ones haven't done it before. So. That's right, my mind.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Richard.
Yep.
Bo.
Uh yeah, but this is longer than normal, but um this wrapped up homecoming week. It's always a, it's a nice. Sign of relief, but I think kids did a really nice job with it. The football team did win their homecoming games, but it's a, it's a big one, but you know, nice safe, safe homecoming evening. Drawn from it, so. Again, at the uh assembly, we had the counterpart to the softball player. He's a professional snowboarder. Really positive message about. You know, the idea of things like, well, what's there to do around here? Kids say nothing. And he said, well, great, now you have nothing to prevent you from being. Fantastic or great or something. So you just had a nice spin on things. Um we're we're planning prepping for our P S E T testing that we do every year, so. Um on the twenty-fourth, we kind of go about half day schedule, nine to the eleventh graders, do the P S A T or some version of it. And then um really, it's kind of, it's kind of our benchmark testing. It kind of gives us some data about where kids are at. Um just kind of some, some other data for um. Kind of as they progress through high school, essential skills is one thing that's been gone for a while that might come back, so we continue to. Keep this alive and does help us down the road sometimes. Um uh but as we have uh U science, we just rolled out uh another year of the U science aptitude test for our freshmen, so they're kind of. Taking that on. It's it's a really neat system. It builds resumes for them. It shows them. Um where their interest is, but also what their aptitude is, and we kind of compare like. What you like this, but this is saying that you're not really built for that job. You thought about these other career paths, so. We try to keep that in line as they go through high school and then hopefully. Um the seniors, they do a senior project within that scope of a strong fit. They say your aptitude really doesn't change a whole lot from year to year. So freshman to a senior, it doesn't. Their skills change, but their aptitude is similar. So kind of a nice, I think, talking point for teachers. Um. Uh move off that, uh we are trying to do our own, it's called team organ build. It's for the. There's a system where they essentially get free material to build these like micro homes or small shed-like structures. So a lot of it's like uh displaced families with fire damage. Uh they've done homeless shelters, these different groups. We, we're not on the contractor. Officially with the team organ bill, but we've been in communication with them and we're gonna build two. I think they're eight by sixteen shed micro residences this year, just to. Get kids go on. So we're using the high school success money for supplies and things and. So we're gonna give it a go and then see how it goes and then hopefully we can turn it into a. Um an annual thing that goes with our construction trades class that we started this year. Um. What else? And then. Yeah, that's, it's about it. A lot, a lot going on. Very teacher conference is coming up, end of quarter and a benchmark. The one thing I did put on my notes is, um I think it was last year we talked about um. Me getting who our student of the month was. I didn't know if you still wanted to know that, but Audrey Yell was our. Student of the month for the first, first student of the month.
Good. Sounds good. Yeah, as a board, um we partner with local business to provide them with a pizza. And uh so. Figure out how that will look, but. Get a certificate or something. Might make her come in next month.
Yeah. She's a busy girl, so.
They should have her volleyball now, I think. Excellent. Thank you very much, Bo. Bill, anything you want to add?
I think that covers it well.
Wonderful. Anyone questions or anything?
No, maybe add to your list um. Keep her name and I'm sure we have some sort of certificate to print out and then I'll chat with you about. And get Matt picked up.
Yeah.
And invite her next month, okay? I guess the invite would be for her and whatever family could attend.
Uh next thing is a Smile Club newsletter. Look at this thing. To be very well produced. That's an elective class.
Last six month. Science, science and math.
After, completely after, wow.
They're pretty up and involving in science night.
Alright. Cool. Like it. Um old business, second reading of policy I G A B. Which is our uh drug, alcohol, tobacco, nicotine. Steroids, influence, enhancing substances. See, we added nicotine as opposed to just tobacco, since there's new ways for consumption there.
Two things I highlighted were two of the hands that we removed in that verse second. I, we either need the and or a comma. So since students throw on alcohol, tobacco. Maybe a comma after alcohol.
Yes.
We need one after harmful, too.
Yeah, just any place the hand was taken out without a comma there.
And I think those were the only two that I, I learned. Yeah. Um. So I will motion to approve this with those two corrections.
Okay. Those in favor? Excellent. Next thing would be our board goals.
Wait, hold on. Oh, okay.
Sarah, would you be so kind as to read our board goals?
Uh so after meeting and discussion, uh the board is opposing the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six goals to be. A, invest in and improve K three eight literacy and math. B, continue to build.
B, continue to build and expand career like related learning across the district. C, increase family, community, communication at all levels, including social media. And D, maintain our five-year district, district-wide maintenance plan.
That fits wide, you know, really nicely with what you guys are doing.
I will motion to approve our two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six board goals.
Those in favor? Uh, new business, report to the community division twenty-two standards, twenty-four, twenty-five.
So the division twenty-two stands, it's just assurances to O D E the word, that we have policies and practices in place they require. Uh, we do it every year. This is the, this is the working tool. Uh, so this is the piece that we use to go through and uh, check policy and find evidence of what we're doing. So most of the evidence you see is gonna be policy references. We are, uh, good, really across the board, uh, we have stayed up on our curriculum with options. Which is good. That wasn't always the case. There are, um, some that aren't in place yet, uh, that will be coming for next year that we'll be working on. So more, uh, more policy to look at, at some point in time as we go through. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention that kind of goes along with this, so I did talk to O S B A about the policy audit. Uh, and the process for that, uh, they do three audits, one is very intense, also a lot of in-person work. Um, I don't remember exactly, I should write it down, eighty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the second is a desk review, so there's probably Zoom meetings, a lot more just paper back and forth or documents back and forth. Um, and that's the one that in talking to other superintendents that they've used is the desk audit. And then there's a, a minimal one, it's a little bit less, the desk audit was about seventy-eight hundred dollars. Um, we talked about it, we would really, we would really like to do it. Um, it would, it would go hand in hand with this process as well. Uh, just because most of this is policy that it supports that. So it'd be a way to go through and kind of double check and make sure that we're all in the right place. Uh, it does take about a year and a half, according to others that have gone through it. But I think we can start anytime, it'd be a worthy task to take on.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And again, your email there, I was trying to find it really quick, um, was there some confusion about converting it to a document we could?
We just have to, we just have to work out how we're gonna get them the documents. They want, they want clean PDF files, not all of our stuff is in clean, clean PDF files. So, uh, something just needs to be worked through. So it, it does put some stuff on, this Casper's plate to convert. It's just, you know, it's a system that's been around for a long time, so, but we don't have a paper copy anymore. Uh, we kind of gave that up, I don't know, five or six, seven, eight years ago. It used to be we would refresh the book every year, so you had to give the book to, uh, Mrs. Manley and she would spend the summer putting paper in it. Um, yeah, we haven't done that for a while, otherwise that would make it pretty easy. We do have all the documents, it's just some of them are different formats. Small hurdle, so, but we're good on division twenty-two.
Nothing in there that you feel like we need to?
Is this, um, certificate of attendance, is that one the, I mean, the privilege that it doesn't tell you a lot, but like, does that want to increase the need for attendance or that's just disposing to parents that it takes so much attendance to pass?
It's, it's basically just a, uh, pretty minimal certificate and get for attending high school.
Everything.
They change, they like to change that one often.
Okay.
And there's just, there's a lot of notification requirements around.
Excellent, uh, superintendent evaluation process timeline. Uh, November first, looks like we need to figure out some evaluation forms. Just several steps here, this is the one we established a couple of years ago, right?
I think so, yeah.
Hey? Anyone have any thing they want to change on this or?
We got that form from, over here.
Yeah, the one we sent out, I think it came from somewhere.
O S B A.
Yeah. Can we check and see if it's changed?
Yeah.
Maybe?
Yeah, I doubt that it has, but I'm happy to check.
I think the timeline is probably fine.
Yep. That one's good.
So that means you've just gotta get together sometime in December. Oh, by late November.
Yep.
We can probably plan that at our November meeting.
Let's see, November meeting is?
Monday?
Yeah.
We just added to the agenda last week.
No, because we didn't have forms, but we came in for a second meeting. But I think we did it the week before, we were out for Thanksgiving.
Just so everyone knows, we'll be gone the tenth.
Me too. So maybe like the eighteenth?
Yeah, that'd be.
It's a Tuesday.
Mm-hmm, that'd be fine, I'll be back then.
Can we go a little earlier? Yeah.
You saying, what did you say?
I have to take somebody to the airport at five P M, so.
What time are you going sooner? Maybe like three.
Yeah, winter time, I can be flexible.
And that we get out here at five?
Lemon eighteen and three P M.
Uh, policies, J F C E B and J F C E B dash A R, personal electronic devices.
So these are the new required, uh, basically cell phone policy. Um, state, the A R is an exemption, um, policy. Optional. But after thinking about it and talking to others, felt like just, we'll go ahead and put it in. Leave it with, uh, we'd like to do this in reading, so if you have thoughts on it. No, but we did, we did match the policy to what we're doing in the building, so. Yeah, match up well.
So I'm assuming the, the medical exemption would be for like monitoring is?
Yeah, uh, diabetes monitoring is the one that I'm hearing is the most common.
I think I'm gonna, um, ask the principals, what do you, have you guys had a chance to read this? And what do you feel? This is the policy press?
It feels accurate in application.
Um, I will motion to approve the personal electronic device policy.
Those in favor? Do you do the same thing for the little?
It's gonna be one, one, yeah.
Everything I got for paper, um, I see we have relief nursery, um, mural requests.
Well, they, they emailed me wanting to know if they could have permission to paint a mural on the side of the building. I'm not sure which side of the building, I'm not sure what the mural is, I just wanted to throw it by you. If you said sure, let's see what they give us. We obviously, I would want some level of, uh, information as to what they're planning on doing.
What it is.
Or I could just say no, we'd really not have any murals. I just wanted to, to double check you guys and make sure that was something we wanted to even allow them to go. I don't want to go down.